Mr. Ames?
Yes.
You may start the meeting.
Thank you, Sandaya. I'd like to welcome everybody and call to order our Public Planning Committee's special meeting of Wednesday, June 16th. Sandaya, have we complied with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we have.
Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
Here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
One second. Thank you very much. Sandaya, call the roll, please.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd, 2021?
Don't move.
A second. Thank you. Sandaya, please call the roll.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes. Before we go to appearance by citizens, I think we all noticed that Teresa is not with us. She lost her granddad, and that's always a sad moment for everybody. So our thoughts and prayers and condolences go out to Teresa and her family at this time. Sandaya, thank you for your help today. Would you proceed with the public comments?
Yes, sir, certainly. Public comments concerning agenda items were submitted electronically via the Open Town Hall portal. Those comments were provided to the committee for review and made part of the official meeting record. In addition to submitting comments on the portal, citizens were provided the opportunity to call into the meeting to comment. Mr. Chairman, we have four callers sign up to speak to the committee today regarding e-bikes.
Go ahead and proceed with them. Thank you. Invite them to talk.
Mr. Babbel? Frank Babbel?
Can you hear me, Sandaya?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for letting me take the opportunity to speak with you. I'm going to read something I wrote this morning. It came to me. And please take it for what it is. "The town of Hilton Head Island and many of its gated communities have done a spectacular job building a network of safe pathways that connect the entire island. It is the envy of the east coast, and particularly those communities with whom we compete for tourists on the southeast. But to coin the analogy, the town has built an excellent computer, but some of the essential software is missing. We don't make the bike shops post rules. We don't raise awareness about safety. And here we are, a committee of town council members trying to decide what to do about e-bikes. I would ask you the question, who is in charge of biking on Hilton Head Island? The League of American Bicyclists specifies that every gold-level bike-friendly community have a bike-ped coordinator. It's a requirement. We don't have one. I would submit that if we had appointed one when we first were awarded golds in 2015, we wouldn't be having this meeting. Though with this issue, reality has caught up to us. I think we need to start our thinking by realizing that biking on Hilton Head Island is a big deal and merits more attention. Remember, for six years straight, TripAdvisor rates riding Hilton Head Bike Trails as the number-one best thing to do on Hilton Head Island. Off this island, the world is changing. E-bikes are selling like hotcakes, just like Teslas. The government even has a bill in process that will award $1,500 to everyone buying an e-bike. For us, this is serious stuff. The basic problem is that e-bikes are capable of speeds that are not appropriate for our multi-use pathway system. There are a few people who think e-bikes are one of the park rides in our amusement park now called the South End. Some people ride them too fast. The second problem is that they're very heavy. Speed plus weight plus congested pathways don't make for a good mix. So I would submit, it's time to gain control of our pathways. We need to regulate bikes, and we need to establish speed limits. We also need to put in place some rules of pathways adequate and begin establishing a culture of safety on our community pathways. It's time to share the public pathway space equally between all users. We also need to put in enforcement. We don't need to divert Beaufort County Sheriff's Office deputies with guns and holsters on bikes. We need to hire some retired people, dress them up, train them, and put them on patrol. This is what Greenville and other communities have done. We can add beach patrol and possibly, to a lesser degree, our bike ambassadors to the mix. We've been working with the bike shops that rent these e-bikes. They know that change must take place. They have lots of ideas and are willing to help. We need to engage them and come up with solutions. They are willing to help us hold more people accountable for their actions. E-bikes are coming. When the bridge gets built, people will use e-bikes to come on island to work. Others will come to the beach, do tour from the east coast, ready to visit, and leave the island to visit Pictian and Bluffton. That day will come. And finally, and to close, we need to begin tweaking our pathways to make them safer and deal with systemic congestion. Mark gets it. We've got the resources. The fiscal year '22 budget has nailed it. Now we need the will to take charge and begin changing the culture of recreational biking on our amazing island, from one of last affair to safety for all pathway users. Thank you very much for your attention. Any questions on behalf of the answer?"
Not at this time. Thank you. Go ahead, Sandaya.
Mr. Jason Bullock?
Good morning.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning. I am now unmuted. Thank you all for your time this morning, and thank you for taking up this very important issue. I am part of the bike industry on Hilton Head. I have the largest inventory of rental bikes. And I have spent a long time thinking through the process of the rental of electric bikes and have tried to change my mind on multiple occasions and have been unsuccessful. I continue to come back to the rental of electric bikes is an inherently dangerous process for not just the renter, but the other people who enjoy, as Mr. Babbel said, the great bike paths we have on this island. Watching a family ride a bike at a normal pedal speed and then encounter an electric bike coming upon them either forward or behind them is a uncomfortable process. Electric bikes are entirely too fast for our pathways and for the beach. Watching on the beach is even a more unpleasant process as bikers weave in and out of traffic. Though, as Mr. Babbel has said, e-bikes are here and they are going to continue to be here, I don't agree with the ability to easily enforce bikes on paths, especially personal bikes. I don't think that there is a way that the town can put enough resources to be able to do that. But regulating people like myself in the bike industry and making it something that we cannot do that is written into our business licenses will take a tremendous amount of pressure off of the pathways and off of the beach with the electric bikes. As a good capitalist and entrepreneur, you always want to win. So if we start allowing the bike companies to do more and more rentals, there is going to be a continued competitive increase for bigger, larger, faster, cooler electric bikes. If we just go ahead and knock it out at the beginning and say, no rental of electric bikes, that's a problem that we're not going to have to have. So I appreciate the time to speak with you all and put those thoughts onto the official record, and also look forward to being any assistance if you need some additional people from the industry to be a part of this planning committee. Thank you.
Jason, thank you very much. Go ahead, and Sandaya.
Ms. Patsy Bryson?
Good morning, Patsy Bryson, for the record. I live in South Forest Beach area. My husband and I chose this because it is a walkable community. We can walk to get takeout food. We can walk to restaurants. We walk to CVS. It's a 10-minute walk to the beach. I am an avid walker. There are several loops in the South Forest Beach area which I walk on a regular basis on the multi-use pathways. When I want to walk a longer distance, I include a loop that goes up into North Forest Beach. So I have extensive experience walking on the multi-use pathways. Based upon, I'm also an active bicyclist. Between my husband and myself, we own four bikes, none of which are motorized, two road bikes and two beach or comfy bikes. We have bikes on all of the public pathways on the island, also lead families and friends on those pathways. We've also biked on the beach. So I have extensive experience biking on the island. I've also been a 20-mile ride leader for Pedal Hilton Head Island. Also am a bike ambassador. Based upon my experience and knowledge and research, I'm adamantly and unequivocally opposed to e-bikes on our multi-use pathways. Based upon their weight and speed, based upon the limited width of many of our multi-use pathways and limited sight distance, and also disrepair some of our pathways. Add to that the frequency and the multiple users of our multiple, sorry, multi-use pathways. Our pathways are not designed for electric bikes. I provided to the committee an email of yesterday with extensive research and also with photographs of measurements I have made in the South Forest Beach area of our pathways, some of which are as narrow as 4 feet and 3 inches. And that pathway is on Nassau Street, which connects Pope Avenue to DeAlion and goes right by Low Country Celebration Park. I've seen e-bikes in Low Country Celebration Park adjacent to the children's play area. They are too dangerous to be around children on the pathways and on the beaches. In this year's Pedal Hilton Head Island, I was a leader for the 20-mile route, and that speed was 8 to 10 miles per hour. For the 40-mile route, it was 13 to 15 miles per hour for the first 20 miles. And for the most active and experienced cyclist, the 62-mile route, which was on the roads, not on the pathways, it was controlled speed of 20 miles for the, sorry, 20 miles per hour for the first 21 miles. I also need to point out that the information the staff has provided about Myrtle Beach is not accurate and not complete. Please look at the research I have provided. In addition, People for Bikes, the website, www.peopleforbikes.org, says-
Go ahead, Patty.
Says to consult your local jurisdiction. It does not say that local jurisdictions cannot regulate e-bikes. In my experience, we are a bike-friendly community, and our beaches are friendly to families. We need to keep it that way. I do not believe that we can enforce speed limits on the bike path. I can ride my road bike as fast as 16 to 17 miles per hour, but do not do that on the multi-use pathways. I can ride my road bike on declines across Island Bridge as fast as 24 to 25 miles per hour. That is not a safe speed for our multi-use pathways. I urge the town council through this committee to maintain its prohibition of motorized bicycles on our pathways found in the current code. It is your job to set policy. It is the staff's job to find out how to implement that policy and not to say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. Sandaya?
Mr. Jim Hall? Mr. Hall?
Good morning. Yes, good morning. Yes, good morning. Thank you for the time today. My name is Jim Hall. My wife and I own Hilton Head Bicycle Company on Arrow Road. I'm also a resident on the island and appreciate the opportunity to comment on e-bikes. While I'm also treasurer for BikeWalk Hilton Head, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and our bike shop, not as a board member for the association. E-bikes are here to stay and offer well-known benefits to those needing assistance to ride. They reduce car traffic. They ease parking congestion, and are also a significant opportunity for equity by allowing our workforce additional transportation options. We have sold bikes to many who are using them for transportation to work, including our own employees. We have a parking challenge at our shop, and several of our full-time people ride to work every day, including myself. I support allowing e-bikes on our paths and beaches, and have had productive conversations with six of the leading bike shops on the island regarding how bike shops can be active contributors to enhancing safety, courtesy, and accountability for all biking on the island. These ideas have been previously shared through BikeWalk Hilton Head Island Association and include reducing bike speed for our e-bike rental fleets, posting speed limits, and using our platforms to educate all bikers about local rules, safety, and courtesy. A recent review of our rental data revealed that the median age of our renters was 62, meaning that half of our renters are over that age, and have often been people getting back on bikes to keep up with a spouse or family group, just trying to see more of the island. Every one of our rentals has provided a helmet, and the vast majority of our riders are seen using the helmet, leaving, and returning to our shop. And yes, we do record video. Yesterday, we hosted a tour for two parents in their late 50s and their 24-year-old daughter with Down Syndrome, who completed a 20-mile guided tour that would have been very difficult for her without e-bikes. There is no interest to market rental bikes based on speed. On the contrary, all the shops I've spoken with have already reduced the max speed on their rental fleet bikes. To sum up, the six bike shops that provided input on recommendations are focused on providing a great experience for visitors to the island. We consider ourselves to be ambassadors, an extension of the Chamber of Commerce, and ways to help strengthen tourism and visitors coming to the island. And you can see it. The Google reviews for those six shops average 4.8 out of 5. And while reviews are an imperfect measurement, it's clear that as a group, it's in our best interest to continue to offer great products and services to visitors so they want to come back. Of critical importance is that people have a safe experience, and I believe that is the direction the town wisely wants to head. E-bikes are a demonstrated attraction to visitors, and the safest place for everyone to ride right now is on the paths with reasonable speed limits and signage. The bike shops can be a significant part of the solution, specifically with a focus on education and accountability. I asked the town to work with us to enhance the total biking experience on the island while the town works to expand bike paths and bike lanes. Thanks for the time today.
Thank you, Jim. One quick question. Did you say you have video or insist on video? What is that?
We have video all over our premises, mostly for security purposes, but we include the parking lot, which is where we train riders, teach them how to use the bikes, and we can see them riding off and we can also see them coming back. So it's basically to make sure that they're actually wearing their helmets.
Yep, good. All right. I didn't, I appreciate the clarification. Thank you very much. Sandaya is there, all four then?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. The next order of business, new business, is regulation of e-scooters. And I think Diane Bush, Anna's attorney, is going to make a presentation to the Public Planning Committee.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Diane Bush, Chairman Ames, committee members. I have prepared a presentation to you regarding motorized scooters. We got the slide up. All right. There we go. Are you all able to see that?
We are.
Thank you. Staff has identified multiple concerns stemming from motorized or electric-powered devices traveling on our pathways and roads. This came up as a business mandatory license to rent these. The concern staff had in reviewing the business license application had to do with, primarily with safety concerns for the riders, pedestrians, bicyclists, pardon me, motorists. The pathways are already crowded, and that we don't see a way to enforce a helmet requirement either based on some Supreme Court law. We feared that the addition of these devices on the pathways would also interfere with the ability of disabled individuals to have safe access to town pathways, and then the potential for blight as a result of riders parking or abandoning their scooters in inappropriate places. From a federal perspective, unlike e-bikes, there is no federal law that specifically addresses motorized scooters. Therefore, there's no federal preemption. In other words, the states can legislate as they see fit with regard to these devices. In South Carolina, we don't specifically define scooters, and so they therefore fall into a category of a definition of motor vehicles, which includes motorcycles, low-speed vehicles, ATVs, and mopeds. Of those, motorized scooters fall into, best into the definition of motor vehicles. Whether they are motorcycles best defined or mopeds, that's up for discussion. The town code defines motor scooters within the definition of motor vehicles. And for the purposes of that chapter, every device by which a person or property may be transported or drawn upon a highway by mechanical means, including not limited to autos, buses, motorhomes, motorized campers, boats, airplanes, motorcycles, motor scooters, which means, in essence, that these devices are governed in the same way that a motor vehicle is. And that means that they're not lawful on our pathways. That's an idea. If y'all are unfamiliar with what we're talking about when we're talking about a motorized scooter, they started off without motors and have, over the years, evolved into something that has a motor. We took a look at what other states were doing. Many states do not have specific laws that govern or distinguish scooters from any other devices, which include South Carolina. These three states, and keep in mind that this is ever-changing. A lot of these issues are still being discussed in committee, and it's a constantly changing proposition how these devices are treated. But at the time of my research, these three skates prohibited them. The following skates prohibited them on roadways or sidewalks. These states, and I can go into the details if you'd care to, with which states have particular regulations, but these following states allow them on streets and sidewalks with restrictions. We then took a look at what was going on within our state. We've tried to focus on either coastal communities, communities with pedestrian and bike pathways, or ones that had had recent legislation regarding scooters. These municipalities have, in essence, banned scooters. Charleston has an ordinance. They went through a temporary ban and converted it into a permanent ban. Folly Beach adopted the state law for motor vehicles, which means they're not permitted on the road, but not specifically by ordinance. Kiowa, same thing, adopted the state law, which keeps them off of the roads and off of the pathways. We took a look at out-of-state communities and determined that several prohibited scooters on bike paths, sidewalks, shared paths, and useways, including Sanibel. Ocean City, Maryland prevents rental scooters. But in essence, these communities are regulating these devices. We then went to look within the town of Hilton Head Island to see what was going on with our particular communities and how they were treating these devices. What I learned is that it's, several communities are just on the brink of making decisions. For example, Port Royal, it's coming up before the board. I don't know at which stage, but it's definitely percolating. Long Cove has not had to develop a policy because it's not been an issue for them as of yet. Seapines, they're not permitted. They're not permitted in Hilton Head Plantation. Pembroke Dunes does permit them under current ordinance. They have drafted some additional regulations, however, that are out for property owner comment. Wexford has no formal policy as of yet. Shipyard, this week, the Security Committee and the Executive Committee is going to make a recommendation to the board that all motorized vehicles be banned from the roadways, sidewalks, pathways, et cetera. Pembroke Hall, it's coming up on the agenda, excuse me, because they are having issues with these devices. I don't know what the outcome will be. Thank you. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I think we'll have questions. You can get rid of the slideshow, please.
Yes, sir.
See people. Thank you very much. Ms. Becker, would you like to ask questions, make comments?
I think I'm going to listen and hear what other people are thinking, but just as a general observation, I don't, I guess what I can say is I listened carefully to what Mr. Babbel and the others were saying, and for the most part, my observations are consistent with those. Our bike paths are crowded. Our bike users generally are polite and the rest, as we would expect them to be. But then there are those who run past the stop signs, and the faster that folks can go, the more congested, and the longer they think they may have to wait behind that stop sign, I would imagine the inclination is to try to get ahead and cross the roadway. I just see danger all over the place, and the more we put on the path, the more, I fear, consequences might not be desirable, obviously. Thanks. That's all I'm going to say now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stanford?
Good morning, everyone. Diane, thank you for your presentation this morning. I need some clarification. I think one of your last sentences was that motorized vehicles were banned in a certain community. Did I get that correct?
Not motor vehicles, but scooters as defined as motor vehicles. And the reason is because, as a motor vehicle, you're not permitted to go on a pathway, a sidewalk, anything other than a roadway. And because these devices fall into a category of motor vehicles, which hasn't been specifically designated in South Carolina, we have to try to find which place they best fit. They're going to fit in either the category of a moped or of a motorcycle, in which case both require safety equipment, lights, turn signals, that sort of thing. They also have to be registered with the state or with the SC DMV, and there's licensure requirements. So as a practical matter, there's nowhere for them to go. There's, other than perhaps private property, there's nowhere lawful for these devices to travel or to be operated within the town limits.
I understand that, and I think, I appreciate your clarification. This is a dumb question, but why are we drawing distinctions between e-bikes and e-scooters?
Because the state law has in, in early 2020, the legislature changed the definition of electric or helper motor bicycles to equate that of a bicycle. So they have already been defined. They're, they've been taken out of the category of anything other than they're equal to a bike. And that's the current, that's the current law in South Carolina.
All right, that, that clarifies that for me. Thank you. It's, it's a matter of state definition, which applies to e-bikes, but there is no such regulation having to do with the scooters.
That's correct. That's correct.
I have not personally experienced the scooters anywhere. I assume that they're here, but I don't think they're here anywhere nearly as much as the bikes are. Like each member of council, I've gotten a lot of emails and messages from people who are expressing very valid safety concerns. The constant problem that we have in matters like this is that we can adopt rules and regulations controlling these things, but enforcement is a, is a really challenging issue. It seems to me that it's easy to say, to flip back to bikes for a minute, e-bikes. It's easy to say e-bikes are not permitted on the pathways. I'm not sure that's lawful. And I don't know how practical it is, given what we've heard from the two industry representatives that have spoken to us this morning. It appears that the e-bikes are in fact here to stay. And so the challenge for us is to come up with appropriate regulations. I have heard things like limit the speed of the e-bikes, which can be done apparently with speed governors that can be installed, activated, whatever's the right term there, by the rental company. And so I think that we need to work hand in hand with the industry that is renting these vehicles, together with the information that you have gathered for us here, to come up with some sort of practical approach to this. I like the idea of trying to create some voluntary enforcement. But as a practical matter, again, as a legal matter, I have a question whether someone like that, if we pick John Doe Senior Citizen here and put them through four hours of training and issue them a vest and a helmet, and they stake themselves on the paths, I, I, I'm concerned about what the reaction would be from someone who is flying by on an e-bicycle to being stopped by such a, a person with limited authority, let's say, as distinguished from a sheriff's deputy or someone like that. So unfortunately, what I see is problems, and I see a serious safety issue out there and a mishmash of laws, which are certainly not your fault, but you've tried to clarify them for us here, and I think you've done a good job of that. And so to me, what we need to do, I think, is to work hand in hand with the industry that is renting these e-bikes. As a general rule, I don't favor banning activities because a lot of people feel like they are, they are not safe. But at the same time, I think in the case of the e-scooters, that probably is where we're going. So I look forward to more comments from my colleagues. Thank you, David.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I'll, I'll start with a supportive, a comment from Mr. Babel about us needing a bike path coordinator. I just think that's something that we need to really talk about in our next budget cycle. So I've got a couple of questions. I'm not sure if anybody can answer them for me, but the first one is, I understand that we're trying to roll the e-scooter into the state definition of moped. But can anybody tell me the difference between an e-scooter and a moped?
Yes, sir. A moped is, its top speed is, let's see if I can find this. And, and if I may, we've, we have separated these topics. The, although there's a lot of crisscross, in, in our preservation, presentations today, we've separated e-bikes from scooters. And what we're recommending on the scooters is that the committee consider an ordinance, which I skipped slides and I apologize for that, that the city would consider an ordinance which would prohibit them from traveling on the pathways, the, any, any town-owned property such as parks, parking lots and so forth, and as well as the bike paths. So they're separate, they are separate items. In terms of the definitions of a, of a moped, and it well may fall back actually into the category of a motorcycle. One thing, I'm certain that it does fall within, within our statute, it does fall into the category of a motor vehicle.
Okay, well, I guess, and my comments and questions are gonna be germane to item 8A, the e-scooters, Ms. Bush.
Yes, sir.
So the memo to us comes forth in the recommendation paragraph here. Staff recommends that motorized scooters be expressly prohibited for use on public roads, pathways and right of ways within the town of Hilton Head. So I guess I, I'm a little confused if we are lumping e-scooters under mopeds, are mopeds also prohibited on our roadways?
No, but they have, and I, I have the definition that it is, it's importantly, the input is designed not to exceeding 750 watts and to be no more than 1,500 watts, which is obviously much more powerful than, than what we have. But both mopeds and motorcycles are required to be titled and with, with DMVS, and they're required to have a number of different safety equipment with them, such as brake lights, a front light, brakes and so forth. So there's, it doesn't, the scooter doesn't fit in anywhere precisely because we don't have a state definition of it.
Thank you. Curtis, you wanted to say something?
I did. Ms. Brown, the, the, the definition that is in the ordinance for, for the e-scooters is, defines things that are, that are unlike anything defined in the state statutes, meaning, you know, the hoverboard type thing, or when I, when she describes an e-scooter, it's the kind of thing like a, you know, it's like a kid's kick scooter that has a motor on it. And, and those things with one wheel that you balance on, I mean, the definition is specific to those. And those are kind of a, those, those aren't defined anywhere in the state statute. And so what the ordinance does is to define them as a group, meaning it's got to have, you know, you have to be able to stand on it, self, you know, self-balancing like the kick scooter and the hoverboard and all that. And, and then simply ban those items from the, from, from use on the pathways or town property. I mean, they're, in, in my view, anyway, they're, they're really not, really aren't grouped with motorcycles and mopeds or bicycles or anything else. They're sort of a separate category of thing that isn't regulated by the state. And so the town's ordinance defines them as these specific type items and then, and then overlays the regulation on them.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Coltrane. I guess the, the point I was...
Hope that helps.
Oh yeah, absolutely. It, it helps tremendously. The, the only point that I'm trying to make is that as we, as we move forward with technology, as we move forward with environmental sensitivity, I could see that an e-scooter, and I'm not talking about what you've just described, okay, I'm talking about a moped that becomes more of an electronic device, so to speak, come before us in the near future, okay? And I don't want us to be prohibiting on our roadways, something that is a reasonable means of transportation, but also has safety enhancements along with it. That, that's, that's where I was going, okay?
Well, if it's actually qualifies as a moped, meaning it has the, you know, power requirements and all of that, then yeah, you license them and can operate them on the roads.
Okay. The, the second question, our current code does not allow for, I guess, motor vehicles as is defined on our pathways. Is that correct? There's a code that states that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there some provision in that code for, for maintenance? I, I just thought about this as Ms. Bush was talking earlier. I remember when we adopted the code that there's no texting while driving, and Sheriff's Department came back and said that he needed an exception for that, so that he was not breaking the law. I'm just curious that those that are doing maintenance on our pathways, tractors, trucks and that sort of thing, is there some exception in the code for them?
Yes, there is.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Those are my questions as far as e-scooters are concerned, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Harkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunities to speak. I'd like to begin with a question. If I heard Patsy Bryson correctly, and I may not have, but I, I thought my takeaway was that local jurisdictions can in fact design restrictions that can be upheld legally. Maybe that's a question for Curtis or for Ms. Bush. Because I'd like to know what we can do before we decide what we're going to do.
Well, with respect to e-bicycles, there is text in the South Carolina code that says that an electronic bicycle, or they describe it as a bicycle with a helper motor, they state that it is not a moped and not a motorcycle. And then there's a separate section that says all regulations pertaining to bicycles apply to e-bikes. So I mean, the state code does define them as bicycles. So I, I don't know that I think you can regulate e-bikes separately from regulation pertaining to bicycles in general.
Okay, that's, thank you, Curtis. That's something, respect in your opinion, that I think we need to know, you know, with 100% certainty. My other comment is, one of our basic jobs, I think, as in town council, is to ensure the safety of our residents and those that visit the island. And I have a hard time understanding how we can be, we can honor that, given the fact that on our pathways, yes, they're overcrowded. And yes, the introduction of motorized vehicles, whether it be electric bikes or scooters, to me, it is going to create a very dangerous situation. I can truly see the, the value of a motorized bike for people that are capable of driving on our, our roadways and use this as a means of transportation, a means of recreation, or a means to get to and from work. But I think we're right at the cusp here of spoiling our brand. We, we are very highly rated nationally in terms of our bike way paths. I, I would venture to say there'll be a quick diminution of that status if we allow motorized vehicles of any type to come out, come here. And I guess my last comment is, since they're already here, is the Denny, is Denny out of the bottle? And is it too late?
Thank you, Mr. Harkins. Let me add my comments. Where I begin. I, I put on my 13-year-old hat, and I'm excited about the opportunity to ride an e-bike or a motorized scooter. I'm not sure that I have the maturity to make good decisions. Though I think age is an issue. The second thing I would say is we are a hospitality island, and in a sense, we are trying to offer experiences that somebody might not do back home. So I know there is a, a reason for e-bikes and e-scooters. And what do you call those things that people stand on and they lean backwards and forwards? They have tours on the island?
Segways.
Segway?
Segways.
Okay. So I see segways, trains going up and down the bike paths. And so that's an example of an unusual experience that they probably don't do back home. Though I think there, there's a, there is a reason why people are, and bike rental shops are exploring ways to enhance the experiences of visitors. But, you know, one of the issues that we have is that we have a limited capacity road and pathway system, and it's aggravated by the speeds that we have on our roads. Because if our roads were designed differently with different speeds, then some of these vehicles would feel safe on our roads. And so I think that there is sort of a systemic challenge for us that is bigger than eight feet of bike path pavement. I like the idea of lower energy vehicles moving on the island from an environmental standpoint. I like options for people. So I'm, I'm really torn. I realize that right now we have a looming safety issue that needs to be addressed. So I'm, I'm wondering whether or not it makes sense to allow residents the opportunity to have a class one bike or a scooter. But then I run into the issue that, that Ms. Bush mentioned, that some communities have already banned them. So I, I, I think that's, what, what our choice may be today is recognize the very inherent safety challenge and, and say that we need to plan for these types of vehicles in the future. And that has to do with looking at the entire... And that has to do with looking at the entire network of movement on the island. I, I, there's a gut-level feeling for me is not to restrict the fun of people. I don't, I haven't tried one of those motorized balls that you balance on, but certainly if I were a 16-year-old or a 20-year-old or whatever, I would want to try that. And so essentially what we're saying is Hilton Head isn't the place for that type of activity to occur. The recommendation was that we outlaw some of these things in our parks. Well, my reaction is, gee whiz, maybe that's the best place to allow them. But I think we've got some work to do on this. But the issue in front of us, or at least staffs posing the question, is there a motion to move forward on creating an ordinance to prohibit e-scooters on public pathways, et cetera? And so let's address that specific issue. And Ms. Becker, what are your thoughts on that?
So I hear, I hear what you say with regard to, and I agree, the experience that not only our visitors come looking for when they're on vacation and on Hilton Head Island, but that our residents want to experience as well. I see the practical nature for those who may have other limitations. And then I balance that with the concerns that I see every day. And Bill is correct. Our number-one job is to make sure that our town and our environment is safe. And I don't see the inclusion of these types of vehicles as helping us to get to a place where we're safe and our visitors are safe. It has a lot to do, quite honestly, and it's a conversation that we keep having, and most of which comes back to this issue. It has a lot to do with our capacity. We are overgrown. We have too many people trying to use too few resources, limited resources. And at this point, I think our decisions and our thought process for those decisions needs to include that, just the sheer numbers. And for me, that's going to lean towards saying that we need to limit. We can always go back, I've heard this more than once, can always go back and tweak things. But I think as we move into this, at this stage of the game, putting safety first and understanding our capacity issues at this time might require that we do limitations for these types of activities.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stanford?
Thank you. It's hard for me to say this, but I think we need to be moving forward with details of a ban of e-scooters. They, they don't have even the safety features that you have on a bicycle, like a reflective rear, a rear reflector. And it seems to me that they are much less safe than a bicycle or an e-bike. And so I would be inclined to follow the lead of other communities similar to ours where there has been a ban enacted. And understand now the reason for a distinction between these two different types of vehicles. And so speaking about e-scooters, as I say, it's hard for me to say it, but I'd be inclined to further investigate a ban on those vehicles.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, do you have any comments?
Yeah, but I've got, I've got one, one more question first.
Okay.
Do our pathways currently have a speed limit assigned to them?
I don't think so.
Not, not that we're aware of.
Okay, so in essence, if I am skilled enough, I could ride my non-assisted bike at a speed that could be unsafe. Am I right about that?
Yes, sir.
No consequences, okay. I guess where I am with it at this point, I like to learn more, to be quite frank. And if considering the ordinance is the route to learn more, then I can support that. However, you know, I am by no means wanting to see, I guess, when I define scooters, I'm defining it more as moped-type activity on our bike paths. Absolutely not. It's just not a, not a place for that. But I do have to also recognize that, you know, we have bikers at various different speeds, various different skill levels. We've got skateboarders. And nowadays, I can't really tell if a skateboard is being propelled by someone's foot or some type of electrical device, okay? So, and I know that that's something that is frequently done on our island for recreation and also for means of transportation. I saw a lady pushing her stroller while she was on one of those one-wheel deals. I don't know how that thing was moving, right? The point that I'm making is personally, I need more information as to what's out there, what we're currently experiencing. And the safety piece, I'm definitely in support of. But you run, you run similar risks with just, I guess I'm gonna call them manpower devices, as you would maybe assisted devices. So I guess I'm somewhat torn between the definitions that are outlined here as it pertains to e-scooters and how those really, in my mind, they're really close to what we're defining as e-bikes. So taking them in separate buckets is very difficult for me, at least. So, you know, again, I would, I would like for us to continue the conversation the way I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would, I would agree that if the effort is to move forward to get additional information, then I would support the motion that I think is on the table, and that is to ask staff to prepare an ordinance prohibiting e-scooters. But I think we have an issue with defining the class of vehicles we're really talking about because segue scooters, skateboards, those balls, I mean, they're all an issue on an eight-foot pathway. And I think if we start prohibiting one, then the rationale to allow another begins to dissipate. So I, I think that, is there a motion to ask staff to move ahead with an ordinance to prohibit e-scooters?
I would say move.
Okay. Is there a second? Tammy? Thank you. All right. Sandaya, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanford?
For the motion.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes. Thank you very much. I see Town Manager Mr. Orlando has joined us. Did you want to add something?
No, sir. I've been, I've been listening intently along the way through the, through most of the meeting, and I just shared my screen, watched what you all are talking about as you're making the motion. Nothing to add. I think that, I appreciate Diane's thorough research with our legal intern and all the public comment today. So thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is regulation of e-bikes. And we have a legal intern making the presentation. Welcome, Miss Andrus.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll address it as soon as I get it on the right. Chairman Ames, I had intended to make the presentation unless, are you comfortable to go forward?
Okay.
All right. We're gonna switch spots then. I'd like y'all to meet Laquyn Andrus. He is our summer legal intern and has done all of this work.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's great that we are allowing a summer intern to make the presentation. I look forward to hearing what he has to say.
Good morning, Chairman Ames and other council, council members. Hopefully, the presentation I prepared sort of answers any questions that, that may have already arisen and haven't been yet formulated. Next slide, please. So the, so the approach I took with, with, with my research was a top-down and I guess sort of, I forgot who asked the question, but the, the question I was, I was seeking to answer is what can the town, town do as dictated by federal and state, and state legislation? And then what can be done in terms of what was currently on, under municipal ordinance and just other local regulations? So starting with, with the federal law, so in 2002, the federal Congress passed public passes public law, which defines e-bikes. And I'm not going to get into a definition now because South Carolina did adopt that definition. But the general overview of it is they expressly said it's not a motor vehicle. It's a consumer product. And because it's a consumer product, federal regulation only applies to the manufacturing standards and the first sale. And then more specifically towards what the town can do, it does not preempt the town's ability to regulate traffic laws and vehicle codes. And so in terms of what the federal agencies can do, so with, specifically to the Consumer Product Safety Administration and the National Highway Traffic Transportation Safety Administration, the key points to note with those is that the Consumer Product Safety Administration only applies to the manufacturing and first sale of consumer products such as bicycles. And the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration handles vehicle and safety standards of motor vehicles. And so whenever those two agencies define a product or vehicle, the extent of that definition only pertains to, to those, those aspects of it. And then in terms of the federal land management agencies, the one really that not applies to us, but is more relevant to the town of Hilton Head is the Department of Interior. And in October 2020, the department finalized a rule which adopted the federal definition of an e-bike. And that's relevant, relevant here, or relevant to the town because Pinky Island is, is regulated by or controlled by the Department of, of the interior. And what their rule is that they, they, well, as I said, they adopted the federal definition of an e-bike, they, and then they allowed e-bikes on non, non, non-paved trails and roads, which is the same as traditional bikes. But then also they went a little bit further to provide some guidance for local land managers. And then the next idea was just look at a, a state-by-state overview of, of what, what other states are doing, doing. Someone, I believe, one of the public, public commentators made a reference to People for Bikes. This is their graphic. And according to them, 45 states plus the District of Columbia incorporate electric bikes into their traffic codes and regulate them similar to traditional e-bikes. What, what the, on this map, what the green colors, colors denote is that those states have adopted their model legislation and all that, all that really means is that they, is that they have, they define their e-bikes into different categories or three different, three different classes, Class I, Class II, and Class III, which separates the bikes, separates the bikes in terms of their capabilities. And then while, while there are yellow states, all that really means is that in terms, in terms of people for bikes, that it, they, they don't have the class, class distinctions, but they do regulate e-bicycles the same as they do traditional bikes. And then moving on to the state definition, so the state, so the state defines e-bike is as anything that, that has a power output of less than 750 watts. The electric assist motor shuts off at 20 miles an hour, and the motor disengages when the brake applies, or when the brake is applied. And then also the, the state regulation does go further to say that, that is explicitly not a moped, which means that these bikes are not, are the operators of these bikes are not subject to having our licensing requirements and are not required to register their e-bike with the, with the state DMV. And then as Mr. Coltrane stated, stated earlier, these bikes are expressly stated to have the same rights and duties as, as a traditional bike. So this, this was a conclusion that myself, Ms. Bush, and Mr. Coltrane all, all reached on, on our own. And so I guess the best way to put this plain is that e-bikes are the same as traditional human-powered bikes, and they're subject to the same rights and duties. So I guess to apply, apply that to a different example is that if someone's sentence were to say, we, we need to prohibit e-bikes on our pathways, the correct sentence would be, we need to prohibit all bikes on our, on our pathways. Next. Now, in terms of what, what the states, states can do, there is a state law that says state or municipalities may exercise their police power to regulate the operation of bicycles on their streets and highways under their jurisdictions and under the same state definitions that apply to the town, our, our multi-use pathways, the accessways from, that, that go to the beach and as well as sidewalks are part of the street, streets and highways. And so that, so that means the town may enact regulations concerning the operations of bicycles as we currently do on the sidewalks under our jurisdiction that does not conflict with the state traffic code. I also looked at various states or various cities across the state and then some similar cities in Florida, just, just as Ms. Bush did with, with e-bikes. And for Myrtle Beach, now, I believe, one of the public commentators said, said that our information regarding Myrtle Beach was incorrect. And if, if, if it is, it would, it would not alter our legal conclusion in terms of what the state definition provides. However, last, we, when we previously spoke with Myrtle Beach, they, they defined an e-bike in according, in accordance with the, with the state definition. And then just also added that they're, they do not allow them to go any faster than, or no, they do not allow them to travel any faster than 20 miles per hour. Mount Pleasant, they define an e-bike as a low-speed vehicle, and they, according to them, they have a variety of means to restrict them as a non-regulated vehicle. And then they also stated with, for mopeds, they have a top end speed of 30 miles an hour, but they, however, they didn't specify a speed for their e-bikes. Charleston, Charleston, whenever Ms. Bush spoke, spoke to Charleston, that not, that had not come up on their radar, and they started to, begin to look, look into this after, after that. And they started to, begin to look, look into this after, after that, that phone call. Daniels Island, they're still defining an e-bike as a moped, which according to them are not allowed to travel in excess of, excess of 20 miles an hour. Kiowa Island and, and Folly Beach and Revelle. Their staff attorney was not aware of the recent, recent definition and changes or amendments to the state, to, to the state law. However, despite the, the definition, they still believe that a e-bike is a motor vehicle. And then with regards to Sarasota and Sanibel, they both have adopted the state definition. And if, if we were to go back to that graphic, Florida has adopted the three, or the, the model, People for Bikes Model Law, which has the class, which has, which, which breaks the bikes down in terms of class. And then also, we're speaking with the staff attorney for Sarasota. He's, he stated that it's not a problem. They're similar to us, they're an older community, and they really haven't seen much of a demand for e-bikes. And then coming down to the municipal, the municipal code, currently, the municipal code does not define bicycles. However, however, in terms of the sidewalk, sidewalk, in terms of the sidewalk, as the municipal code defines it, it also includes the pathways, which is intended for the use of pedestrians, bicycles, and, and mopeds. So, that, that is current, current, within the municipal code. So, that, that would mean that the e-bikes are allowed on sidewalks and pathways. Now, there, there's also an ordinance that prohibits the use of motor vehicles on, on the pathways, which, but I believe that to answer Mr. Brown's question, as, are still sticking to the, the answer to Mr. Brown's question, I believe that there is, there are exceptions to emergency vehicles and, and us, and maintenance vehicles. The LMO or the Land Management Ordinance, that too does not, or that does not define sidewalks or pathways. However, the LMO office stated that they do treat those as one and the same. They also, they also provided the definition for a pedestrian pathway, which are the walkways that provide a pedestrian and bicycle passage between streets and buildings or parks or the beach. And then they, they do have standards for the pathways and the bike paths and bike, bike lanes. And then they also define what a, what a bike shop is. And, and that is relevant because the, the bike shop would not, it, it's distinguishable from what, what would be one of the, for example, the electric scooter or electric bike companies that just drop, drop their devices off in, in the location and just set up a docking station and just have these docking stations that are unstaffed and allow people to just take, take the bike using a phone app. Our plan, there, there are multiple provisions throughout their strategic plan, the comprehensive plan in regards to implementing smart infrastructure, increasing accessibilities with regards to the alternative transportation, access to recreational activities, including Pinky Island and, and the beach and just, just touring the island. That was pretty, there, there are so many provisions that I didn't actually include them in the PowerPoint, but I, I can't, I can't provide those as I did, take the time to separate those. And then also including our discussions with, with the local neighborhoods and resorts. So, Palmelo Dunes, they recently adopted the state definitions of e-bikes. So, according to their community, they are treating them just the same as traditional bikes. Sea Pines and Hilton Head Plantation, they both have banned e-bikes, but currently, they're dealing with how to effectively enforce that ban. Port Royal, and, and last, last I heard, that may have changed, is that they're also keeping an eye out to what the town, town is doing for guidance. Port Royal Plantation, they plan to discuss the topic at their next board meeting. With Shipyard, the security and executive committees are recommending a ban to the board this week. And Paul Meadowbikes stated that they're already having problems with e-bikes, but, but they have not come to a determination as of yet. And then with regards to just, just safety issues, we have, we have reached out to code enforcement. Code enforcement has talked to Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Major Vanez reported back to us that they spoke with three patrol supervisors, and none of them have been able to recall any events in the last calendar year involving e-bikes. We spoke to a local manufacturer of e-bikes, who, and the owner of Avocado Bikes. He reported that he is not aware of any incidents of, of e-bikes. And according to him, that, that quote, "fits statistically with the national average." And, but he also stated that on the record, he's not unable to attend because, or unable to attend because he's traveling with his family, that he's in favor of regulating e-bikes. And then also, just, just yesterday, I spoke with the owner of Forest, Forest Beach. They stated that for them, it, in terms of their business model, that they, they themselves are not going to rent e-bikes because it is, it's too expensive and that the return on investment may not be there for, for them. However, they are in favor of regulating e-bikes. And then in terms of safety, in, in terms of safety, they, they stated they're, they're also in favor of regular, or they're in favor of regulating, but they have not heard of, of any, any accidents in terms of the ones that they have sold. And then I, I, I did hear Mr. Bullock's and Mr. Babel's comments earlier. We, we did speak to them prior to today, to today to include the, just bike, bike advocate, bike advocates in the, in the community. And then at, just rehashing out the things that they said, they, they were aware of the safety concerns, the ability to mandate helmets and that they're dangerous. And then, Ms. Mr. Babel, I'm, I, I forgot if he was able to get this in, but he said that he was concerned about whether the pathways are sufficient for all, all traffic. So, sort of to conclude all their comments, or summarize all their comments is, it seems to be that there are general concerns and complaints regarding e-bikes that are not in and of themselves unique to, to e-bikes, but also just bike, bike usage in general. And then in terms of research, there, there are studies out, there are studies out there. The University of Tennessee with their e-bike sharing, sharing system, they found that the usage that, with regards to usage, there was not much difference between the, the speed or the travel speed between a traditional bike and e-bike. And they stated with, with some exceptions, that the riders of e-bikes behave very similarly to riders of bicycles. And there was also a 2016 study examining the probability, probability of an e-bike and a traditional bike to be involved in a traffic, or traffic incident. And they, while they did note that there's a higher risk of conflict at intersection because, because of higher speeds approaching intersection. However, they ultimately concluded that there's little to no difference with regards to risk or actual conflicts. And then in terms of our recommendations and our conclusions, as I stated, under state law, e-bikes are, are bikes. And as everyone else has said, they are, they are currently here. Also, the town should adopt the definition of e-bikes, or adopt the state definition of e-bikes. And under the state definition of e-bikes, the town would be permitted to, to adopt, adopt the classes, class definition, which would distinguish, distinguish the, the bikes in terms of their characteristics and their capabilities. But also, with regards to adopting an ordinance, it would, it would allow the town to be specific with regards to which, which bikes they're, they're referring to and where they are and are not allowed. If, with, with regards to speeding, the town is able, as I say, under state law, the town is able to limit the speed of bicycles. However, that would apply to all bicycles and not just, just e-bikes. However, with regards to e-bikes, the town would be able to, in, in terms of rent, rental companies, they would be, they would be able to regulate the, the rental companies governing this, 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 the speed limit of, of the motor to ensure that they comply with the speed limits on the pathways and sidewalks. And then lastly, we, we, we would recommend that the, that the town consider amending the business license requirements to include that, that definition, the governing system or the governing of, of the bikes to 15 miles an hour, which would mean that the motor shuts off at 50 miles an hour. But similar to a traditional bike, if, if they exceed 50 miles an hour, that would be based solely on human power, human power alone. And then also, in, in terms of long-term consideration, the use of geo-fencing in order to better regulate these e-bikes to prevent them from being shut off, or not, apologies, not shut off, but being parked in restricted areas, which is something that is unable to be done with, with the traditional bikes. And in order to better regulate the speeds on, and better regulate the speeds, for example, distinguishing between being on, on, on the parkway versus on the sidewalk next to Caligne. And that's all I have.
Appreciate that well-researched and presented information. Ms. Becker, do you have thoughts?
First, I have to compliment, that presentation was extremely detailed and well-done. As a resident of the island, very proud to have you present to us today. And as a councilperson, I feel very informed. And as a parent of two lawyers, I remember watching them with the amount of pride as they started into their career and, and these activities that you're now engaged in. So, I just want you to know, great job, continue, you'll have great success. In terms of all the information that was provided, I think there's a lot to digest. And I think that taking a little bit more time to do that at this point may would be beneficial before I make any statements. Thank you.
Mr. Stanford?
Thank you. I echo my colleagues' comments. That was an outstanding presentation, very thorough. You have the mind of a lawyer, young man. So, you will go a long way. What I take away from this, what I take away from this is that the state has already defined e-bikes as bikes or bicycles. And so, we can't single out e-bikes from bicycles in a, in the sense of a prohibition. We could not prohibit e-bikes on our pathways unless we prohibit bicycles on our pathways. However, we can adopt some regulations limiting speed and certain safety concerns. And I think that that is clearly the path that we should be following. I would be interested in seeing this state model ordinance that is in, been adopted in other states to see how that might work in South Carolina. But that's beyond my current authority. And so, we need to look at it from the local point of view. And I think you have given us excellent guidance on how to go about that on a, a local level. But the interesting thing to me is what you pointed out about the definition of e-bikes as bikes and therefore really limiting a lot of things that we might otherwise consider doing. So, I look forward to more information on this. I think we will be probably adopting some regulation of e-bikes within the constraints and limits that you've defined. So, thank you for an excellent report. That's it, David.
Thank you, Glenn. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I echo the comments of my colleagues, Mr. Andres, job well-done. The most intriguing part for me was your mentioning our plan. And I know that we, I had several groups that participated in that effort. And I also know that this new wave of technology was discussed along the way. So, again, I appreciate you putting forth so much information. I, I guess I have two questions. One is, as you were discussing with the current bike providers, I know that one of the owners mentioned that their average age that they rent to is 62 years of age. Can you deny or confirm that or neither, based on some of the other conversations that you've had with the, the bike rental companies?
We, we weren't really looking or surveying what the typical demographic of, of people they're, they were renting to. The one bike company that I did speak to yesterday, that said, that they, that they themselves would not, would not rent because it was, it was, it was too, it was too costly for them and the return on investment just, just wouldn't be there. That, that sort of, for me, that sort of suggested that this would sort of be self, self-regulating and that because, because the cost would, would be so prohibitive for, for some, that it, the targeted demographic wouldn't, wouldn't be, I guess, say, someone with a, who's younger and less likely to be able to afford renting an e-bike.
Okay. No, that's good enough. I guess my only other feelings about this, I know that, I know that Mr. Orlando has plans to improve our, our bikeway system from a safety standpoint, right? And, you know, somehow that needs to be incorporated to our conversation if we're going to be passing any code in my mind. And why do I say that? I agree with Councilman Stanford that the one of the things we can control is speed. And, you know, speed, speed is, is, is dangerous, okay? Speed kills is what, what, what I've heard before. But based on our safety enhancements to our pathways, the question in my mind becomes, what is an appropriate speed? And I don't know that. So, this too needs a lot more discussion before we can make a qualified decision. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to further discussion in the mindset of, of safety, but also in the mindset of understanding that, you know, our, our future continues to change. So, I, I'm not sure that pedaling bikes is going to be here forever, right? So, those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Harkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excellent research. We really appreciate the hard work you did there. You know, it, it's, seems very clear that we all have a lot more research to do. And as we go forward, could you, my sense is, based on one of your citations here, that we, we potentially draw our power to create restrictions from section 56-5-710 (8). Is, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So, it, just, could, could you just lightly summarize what that power is then going forward? So, we have a better feel for... then, going forward, so we have a better feel for really, you know, what authority we may have? So we're, we're grounded in principle?
So, so just, just to rehash that, that the state, state grants municipalities, municipalities, and this is, this is specific to the operation of bicycles, that they can regulate them in terms of, on, on their usage on streets and highways, and then under the definitions of a, our streets and highways, pathways and sidewalks fall, fall under those definitions. So that, so that would allow the, uh, the town to enact regulations concerning the operation of, of bicycles, um, that do not conflict with the state, with the state traffic code. Now, the state traffic code does not say, uh, say anything about, about the speed limit, and I, I will add that, because I, I believe, um, this, this was expressed by Mr. Bullock in, in a statement that he, uh, prepared by, via email, with regards to, to helmets. Um, so with regards to the operation of bicycles, that the, the town would be able to reg- regulate the speed, they're, they're, given the, the, um, enhancements and improvements to the technology, that there are ways to fine-tune that to, uh, for example, have, have one of the rental companies max out, or have the, or govern this, the motor to shut off at fif- 15 miles an hours, 15 miles an hour in certain areas, whereas in other areas where it could be fine-tuned, where the, the motor may, if, for example, if a person takes a bike through Caligney, uh, it, it can be governed so that, so that a motor does not even sh- turn on if it's being, being utilized in, in a restricted area. And then also, in terms of helmets, while this wasn't mentioned, Mr. Bullock, I believe, he mentioned something about it in a, uh, in an email, and then also there, there's a state Supreme Court case where the, where the town, or where the city of Myrtle Beach tried to, um, try, tried to, uh, enact a helmet ordinance, however, the state Supreme Court stated that, um, that, that, uh, Myrtle Beach cannot, cannot do that in terms of motorcycles, and so by analogy and extension, if that applies to motorcycles, then it extends to, uh, say, extends to say that the town would not be able to, um, mandate helmets under, under the uniform, uh, traffic code, and both, and as well as, uh, state Supreme Court precedent. But I, since I was long-winded, to, to summarize, the town would, uh, would be able to right, regulate the speed. Uh, from my personal opinion, that would be easier with an e-bike because they do, um, have a speedometer on them, and whereas traditional bikes do not, and then these e-bikes do have the capacity to, to be governed, so anything in excess of what, what the town decides to, uh, uh, set as the maximum speed limit, that, that would give e-bikes, I, I, I believe, a, a, upper hand, because they, they would be able to visually see that they're exceeding a speed limit, where, um, with a traditional bike, they would just be based on perception and awareness.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much, and I just, one other thing I think that, uh, Frank Babel alluded to is, uh, I think we're all, all worried in the back of our mind of an accident, and the accident really can be summarized in terms of the, the force of the impact. And the force of the impact is, is a function of weight and speed. So we're dealing, I think we've all seen these electric bikes, and they're a lot heavier, uh, than the average bike, so I think, uh, something to noodle on as we go forward. But, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, I, I'm gonna pick up exactly where Bill left off, uh, weight and speed. Does anybody know how much a class one e-bike weighs?
About 40 pounds.
Okay. And a class two presumably weighs more, so I'm, I'm just thinking that if, if we are coming to the conclusion that we can't eliminate e-bikes on the pathways because of laws that prohibit it, um, can we regulate it in some way with weight, uh, so that we don't get class two and class three e-bikes? I, I again am aware of people in our community who rely on a class one e-bike, uh, to be a part of their bicycling activity. So I'm, I'm very sensitive to how we allow people to utilize a bike, but not create the safety problem that excess speed, uh, in, that creates. So, Laquen, am, am I correct that if we regulate e-bikes to 15 miles an hour on the bike paths, that that also means that bikes would theoretically be restricted to 15 miles an hour on the bike paths?
That, that's correct, Chairman. Um, and, and sort of, sort of to give you an, an idea of what other states have done, um, West Virginia and, and, and New Jersey, they, while, while the graphic did show that they adopted the, the three, uh, class definitions, that, that was just in terms of speci- to provide those, uh, specifications to better to, define the, the ordinance and regulations that there are, the right state regulations that, that they were gonna pass, and what those states did was, in one instance, they, they combi- they either combined the classes, so there was no, so there, in terms of the regulation, there was no class one or class two, they, they were together, whereas, um, I believe it was New Jer- New Jersey, it was either New Jersey or West Virginia, where they explicitly prohibited class two because they, they felt that, um, a class, and I apologize because I, I left this out, uh, for those who don't know, a cla- a class two e-bike is those that, or class one is a pedal assist, that the motor kicks in as you're pedaling, and class two is a throttle assist, where you just pu- pull back the throttle, and, uh, similar to a, um, moped or a motorcycle, and with that, you don't not, you do not have to be pedaling in order for the, for the motor to, uh, to assist. And what one of those states do, I, I, I forgot about off the top of my, my head, but what, they explicitly prohibited that because they viewed it as a sort of a loophole to operate it similarly to a, uh, a, a moped. But in, but in theory, yes, a, uh, a 15 mile, mile an hour speed limit on, on the pathway would apply to both e-bikes and bikes.
Okay, and, uh, how is a moped, uh, classified vis a vis use on our, uh, bike paths or leisure trail?
They are prohibited from the multi-use, uh, paths.
Thank you. Um, so I think that, um, going forward, we ought to be looking at, uh, restricting it, uh, use, um, to class one, uh, speed to 15 miles an hour. I think we should be looking at regulations for consistency in rental shops. I think that education and enforcement are an open issue that we need to think about. I think that liability is still an open issue, if we are required to permit them on the bike paths, then liability insurance for, uh, rental companies, and some sort of, uh, agreement with users, and then safety measures that we, the town, um, believe are necessary. So I'm, I'm asking a question, uh, just for clarification. What is the staff asking the committee to do today? And does it make sense to convene a small committee, or have a, some kind of a workshop where stakeholders can weigh in? I, I'm not really looking at this to get more and more opinions, but if we are operating under the assumption that we are going to have to permit e-bikes on bike paths, then what does, what do the stakeholders think ought to be in that, uh, ordinance? So what staffs recommend, what staff asking the committee to do today?
Um, at this point, Chairman Ames, we, we introduced this presentation for educational purposes, um, to allow the committee to understand what the laws are and, and the restrictions that can and can't be placed on these bikes, and for, in essence, for y'all to, um, to digest the information and, and decide how you wanna go. One of the other, um, options in terms of how to attack this is to go back through our delegation to the legislature and, and ask that they include in their definition specifically that we, that municipalities have additional authorities to regulate these devices. So there's a number of different ways to go, but we just wanted to get the conversation started, and including the stakeholders, to see where you wanted to go.
Okay, I, um, I just want to be absolutely clear and have a, um, committee be clear. I'm concluding, based on the presentation today, that because of state law, we, the town is unable to prohibit e-bikes, uh, on our pathways unless we are also prohibiting bikes.
That is correct.
Okay. So then we have to look at ways of minimizing safety concerns.
Yes, sir.
My, my, my recommendation is that, um, the town manager, make a, um, make a recommendation of how stakeholders, uh, can contribute to the conversation regarding additional research and a potential, um, ordinance. In other words, I think there are so many moving parts on this that we really do need to get a full perspective and input before we, the Public Planning Committee or staff, try to pin down an ordinance. But I think, I think that speed, weight, um, uh, education enforcement, license slash regulations, uh, with the rental companies, and, um, other safety measures that, uh, stakeholders can recommend are a part of the solution. Any parting comments by the remain, the other committee members? If not, I, uh, Glenn, go ahead.
David, I think you've summarized it very well here. Uh, we've learned a lot, I've learned a lot this morning that I didn't know, certainly things that I didn't understand before, and I think your course of action, uh, is appropriate and necessary for us to move forward. My only concern about that is, I don't want this to drag on for months and months and years. Uh, I want us to proceed with, uh, due diligence, if you will, so thank you for your summary.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Now, uh, we're going to get off this topic, but I'd like to take a five-minute break before we dive into the pamato breeze. Thank you.
Thanks.
Diane? Is, is that, is that the last thing for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Curtis.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zendaya?
She stepped out for just a moment. She'll be right back.
Okay, is Mary Lou ready to? Is Mary Lou on the line?
She is on the line.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we all here? No, staff is not. Staff, you ready? Zendaya, are you ready?
I'm going to grab her. Give me just a moment, please.
Thank you.
Whoever would have thought that was so complicated?
Got a lot to learn.
I still think a component of it has to do with trying to put too many people in too small a space.
Absolutely.
Doesn't mean I'm encouraging the idea of increasing the space, but it is a converse, part of the conversation that we need to continue to have so we can come to some thoughts and conclusions. I don't know conclusions, but...
Yeah, no, strategies to deal with it. I agree. And there's so many vehicles within that class of experience, so anyway. All right, it's five minutes. I think we're just going to move forward and Zendaya can join us when she can. I see Tom Lennox is with us as an alternate.
Give me just one moment, Mr. Ames. I'm going to go back live on Facebook. Give me just a second.
All right. Alex, you with us?
Yeah, you can't see me. I'm right here, ready to go.
Oh, I see, it's AB.
Oh, okay, that's me.
Mr. Ames, you're good.
Good, thank you very much. And good morning again. We are going to now hear a presentation by our good friend Mary Lou Frenzoni of Palmetto Breeze to get an update on activity on the trolley. Good morning, Mary Lou.
Good morning, Chairman Ames and the Planning Commission Committee. And it is my pleasure to talk to you about the trolley ridership. I think that we've come into our own a little more this year as our ridership has increased quite a bit. And we did include some of the ridership count three to look at. And we've been very busy over here, and so we're refining some of our counting to divide it into the two routes and hopefully to divide it even further so we can get an accounting of the boarding and alighting locations on each of the routes. We're still working on that. And we discovered as we tried to extract the data from our passenger counters, we have automated passenger counters, that two of them are not working correctly. So we put in a ticket and the company's coming to make sure, they have some type of laser beam when you go out, in and out the front door and the back door that tells how many get on and how many get off. And two of the trolleys that are working and two of them, they are not working correctly. So we are working on getting them so that we can get accurate counts on and off. So pretty, pretty neat technology. And I don't know if there's anything specific that you wanted me to talk about. Just, we did add the new route going up to the Weston and traversing on Follyfield Road. I know we have a lot of fans at the beach and tennis club. And it appears that, you know, that has stoked the ridership. A lot of folks get on and off at the Weston rather than taking their cars out of the lot and go and view the island that way and go to dinner. So it's, it's working out.
Mary Lou, you mentioned, you shared the statistics with us. I, I must have overlooked them or missed them. Where, where are they?
Well, I had given them to Ann Siren, but I could do a screen share if that's acceptable.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
I think I can, that is. Look here to share this screen. Okay. So that's the June ridership. I'm going to click back to May, maybe?
Oh, maybe I did see that, yeah.
Okay, and this is divided by the two routes. And what I thought was pretty phenomenal is looking at the 30th of May, which is Memorial Day weekend, that we carried 950 people on the trolleys that day. And it was a beach day. A lot of them were for the beach. You can see right here that 709 of them were on, or 815 were on the the South End route, which probably was a lot of beachgoers. But we also had a beach trolley out at the same time that carried over 300 people. So Memorial Day, Sunday was our biggest day ever. So when you look at June, you can see our total so far, click to June. Our total so far for the whole season up to now is almost 20,000 riders. And in the past, in the entire season, the high number we had for the entire season was 15,000. And so we're really seeing the trolley catching on. I think adding the additional route has really made this more viable.
All right. Specific questions for Mary Lou? Why don't we start with Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If, if Mary Lou doesn't mind stopping her sharing.
Oh, I don't mind.
Okay, thanks.
Apps? There we go.
Thank you. I'll start with, I took the opportunity to, to ride the trolley. This was my first time being on one of the vehicles since we, since we first launched, except for a little photo shoot. So I never had the experience to actually ride in one. I'll, I'll start with the operators Lars and Lee because I transferred from Mid Island down to South Island. Both were very professional and, and very safe drivers. And I engaged a bit with them as far as conversation was concerned, which I thought was an added touch to the experience. So I thank you and your team for, for that. I guess my first question is, I remember this whole trolley idea coming out of this circle-to-circle exercise, and the intent was to alleviate some of the pressure as far as traffic and parking is concerned in the Pope Avenue area. Thus, that's why I guess formulated that route first, right? And your numbers are describing that there's, you know, absolutely more activity on that end of the island than the other end of the island. Can you, can you just help me with the intent of the second route?
The, the intent of the second route was to stretch our reach a little further north. We are regulated by Title VI, again, maybe something that wouldn't have come to your minds as a public transit provider. We cannot just concentrate our ridership only on the south end of the island. We have to be equitable in the services we provide. And we should probably, the next route should go even further north before we add more to the south because that could get us in trouble with not serving the, all the different economic areas. Title VI is very thorough, based on race and economics and everything about how transit services are put into play, public transit. And so we have to be equitable throughout the, the service area.
Okay, thank you for that. That, that helps me to further my, my thought here. So the, the intent to agree with the Mid Island route is drastically different from what we have on the south end of the island. Because the south end of the island, we're dropping folks off right at Caligny Beach. Or the north end, there's not really a, a beach stop, okay? So I guess moving forward, I would like us to consider some other areas of concern if we are going to continue to expand the services, okay? And your, your metrics are well-defined, but I'd ask that we also include workforce ridership somehow, okay? Because I think we have an opportunity here with moving people around the island. Most of the, what I would describe as affordable housing, you will find it on the north or mid island. And if there's a better way to move people around and we become more efficient with more concentrated areas as far as workforce movement is concerned, I think we'll be in a better place, all right? Those, those were some comments that I wanted to make. And the other was, I was very impressed with the technology. I used the app. I knew exactly where to be. I knew exactly what time the, the trolley was going to be there, and I was thoroughly impressed with that. But I, I asked this question years ago when we were first launching. As I was serving on the Planning Commission, I'm going to ask the question again. Mary Lou, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer it. What is the level of marketing associated with the trolley service?
I don't know how to define the level of marketing, but I do have a full-time marketing person that exclusively markets our trolley through a lot of different venues, but with the businesses and restaurants and also on social media. And last year, we, or two years ago, we did a map that folks could advertise on, different businesses, because we don't want to put ads on the trolley. And we're looking to maybe come up with another marketing tool, which would be a what-to-do-at-each-trolley-stop kind of brochure that we could get all the businesses interested in putting, you know, their information in there so folks knew at trolley stop one, there's all these businesses and things I can do. And so we're working on that right now. But we have a full-time person devoting most of their efforts to the trolley.
And is that person coordinating with our town staff and also Chamber of Commerce as to the messaging and the long-term intent?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just think it's important that, you know, we, we have accepted and adopted to a degree the trolley service being a part of our community and a part of our brand. And I think it's important that it's in line with what we are trying to accomplish long-term with a keen focus on, on transportation. So I applaud you for that. And if you, if you won't, if you wouldn't mind, the next time that you visit with us, that you bring, you know, some, some sort of presentation that is geared more towards marketing for that, that benefit, that'd be great. And the, the other, the other question I had, as far as the trolley stops are concerned, the signage, the pole, was that at the cost of Palmetto Breeze or is that a town incurred cost?
That is all grant-funded, so the town's cost is the local match that we ask for every year. And everything to do with the trolleys is paid for by Palmetto Breeze with the Town of Hilton Head's local match going towards that.
So this is my last comment. I respect what you're saying as far as the trolley stops being a, a where-to, so to speak, and some explanation of things that you can do once you get off the trolley, okay? But the actual physical spot that you are waiting for the trolley, in my, my humble opinion, needs some improvement. This, this is, this is Hilton Head, the, the only stop on the, I guess I'm going to call it the north end that had somewhere for you to sit and rest was at Shelter Cove. And on the south end route, you have the opportunity to, of course, sit and rest at the Caligny Beach drop-off. I'd like to see those improved to a degree where there's at least a place for you to sit. But eventually even some type of shelter may make sense. I'm talking about something that's well-done, of course, you know, that fits into the scheme of, of what we do on Hilton Head. But that, that whole experience i- is where I'm, where I'm going. I think has, has a lot of room for improvement. But those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Stanford?
Thank you. Mary Lou, I, I'm just so thrilled that you've already achieved a 20,000 passenger count this early in, in the highest season. That's extraordinary, and it shows that the patience that we have had in letting this mature and develop, but more importantly, making the rides free to the passengers was, was the magic potion here. And so I think some good judgment was used by you and by the town, and we're achieving great success with this. I'm interested in what sort of problems have been encountered? Have we had any situations with unruly passengers?
Not so much. I, I don't believe anything out of the ordinary comes to mind. Most of the passengers are very well-mannered and I haven't had, we haven't, if we had a bad altercation, we would call law enforcement, and we have never had to do that on the trolley. So I believe that, you know, it's very orderly.
That's great. An issue that I brought up a long time ago when we were talking about the trolleys was the ability of beachgoers to put their stuff, as we say, their carts, their blankets, their coolers, et cetera, onto the bus. How is that working out?
Well, as evidenced by Memorial Day, Sunday, it, it is working out. And the trolleys really help out when there's too many people trying to catch the beach trolley because it takes the beach trolley a little while to get over and unload everybody. And I believe what the drivers do is they raise those two seats up in the front where the wheelchairs would go to allow for the coolers and chairs. And, and I know by the volume of sand that we've swept out of the trolleys that, that they're being used by beachgoers.
That, that's great. And so in the class of unruly passengers, I guess in the evening you haven't had problems with people that have had too much to drink?
No, not, not to my knowledge. I know we've had families and groups and people singing and, you know, I get back that it's, it's very fun and that folks are enjoying themselves in the evenings.
That's great. Finally, I want to echo Mr. Brown's comments about using this as a marketing opportunity to showcase the businesses that are available at each location or the attractions, not necessarily just business, but the attractions that are available there. There's a lot to see and do on this island, and we want to make sure that our visitors know that and see that. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Becker?
Hi, Mary Lou. Thank you so much for joining us today. I have several things that I wanted to have an opportunity to chat about. One is, and I'll just pick up where others just left off with regard to marketing. I certainly think that marketing our businesses and giving a little guide as to what to do makes sense. And I think it's friendly to both visitors and residents to have something like that, maybe attached to the app. But also, I know we've spoken in the past about the educational nature that we could expose our visitors and our residents frankly to. And I think that given the increased ridership, it becomes even more of an opportunity to help folks understand our bike path rules, our beach rules, what's special about Hilton Head with regard to our environment and the rest. So I would like to follow up in terms of, you know, what we're thinking about that and how it could be implemented perhaps on those little television screens that the, the trolleys could hold. The trolleys themselves, other things that come to mind. I've gotten a number of concerned citizens who have expressed that the noise of the trolley, as now the trolleys are going through residential areas, and we may not think of it necessarily so, but Follyfield has, is part of a residential neighborhood. And so those folks are finding the loud diesel engines coming up and down the road every 30 minutes all day. Every, is, is bothersome to their quality of life. And so between that and the above airplane zipping pass, people are making themselves heard that they're dissatisfied. I'm wondering if there's a solution, easy solution to that? And if not, so what we could think of? But I also think long-term, in terms of Hilton Head Island and our brand and what's important to us, what are the opportunities? important to us, what are the opportunities to incorporate electric trolleys? Something that would be quiet, something that would be sensitive to everyone and the environment. So those are two questions and concerns from neighbors along that Follyfield route. In addition, concerns that I've witnessed and I hear others say that the drivers have been safe and the rest. I personally have observed far too many times concerns with the trolleys not abiding by our local speed limits and situations that I personally felt were unsafe. And as a representative of the town, our trolleys ought to be consistent with what those speed limits and safety precautions are. And so I would just ask that that be part of ongoing discussion, that we're 45 miles, 35 miles an hour and when it says Hilton Head Trolley on or we have an official car or we have anything that represents our town, we ought to be setting that example loud and clear for everyone else to follow. And then the third, last thing that I wanted to talk about is as increased ridership begins to happen, a number of things come to my mind, one of which is it's a good time to perhaps develop a survey that could be attached to that app. Perhaps something that someone could pick up when they get in the trolley filled up and leave there in a bin to be collected and analyzed later. But it's a good time with increased ridership to start asking some questions so that we can develop a plan for the future. And along that plan, while I know that everyone's excited by anything that's free, at some point, it'd be nice if the trolley serves a purpose, provides opportunities for both visitors, residents, and as Alex has suggested, perhaps some workforce who can utilize the transportation as well. But in my mind, as things start to increase and stabilize and improve, it should pay for itself and so a fee at some point later should be contemplated. So those are all of my comments. My hope is that all of this will continue to improve and I hope that the suggestions with regard to how we can improve the lives of those residents along the Follyfield neighborhood routes and as we extend even further north, those routes obviously and anywhere else be considered and those electric vehicles, what's up on the horizon for those and bringing that to our island? Thank you again.
Mary Lou, what are the pros and cons of electric vehicles? I'm sure cost is an issue. I think that's what came up before. But what about smaller vehicles, electric shuttles? I mean, what flexibility do you have in Palmetto Breeze to incorporate some of those ideas?
We certainly stay abreast of the alternative vehicles that are on the market. And right now, it is a cost issue, but it's also a technology issue in the infrastructure needed to charge the buses. Some cities that use electric buses have charging stations en route, either in the ground or above, and they come through and as they do their layover, they're being charged. And so that is the best scenario as far as electric vehicles because they don't run out of electricity because they're being charged on the route. The other scenario is where they're charged at the base at night. And I just, for one, the infrastructure's very expensive. And then two, I don't think the technology's really there yet. And listening to my peers talk about buses they have that the manufacturer says will go all day long and they only go five hours and then they have to replace it because it's out of charge. And so in order to have an electric vehicle bus that really works on a route, you need the charging infrastructure out on the route. And so it's definitely not impossible, definitely something that could be done. We would need to pursue grants to get that kind of money.
Well, I just share Councilman Becker's point that there may be an opportunity to have vehicles that seem to be or are more consistent with what people would expect to see on Hilton Head, that's all. Mr. Harkins, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mary Lou, a very, very positive report. Congratulations for the figures you shared with us. You mentioned trying to create more of a sense of balance and you were gravitating toward the north end and what potential is there. Certainly the airports at the north end. What's going on there? What could go on there? As we're all aware of, on a positive, the airport's breaking all kinds of records. On a negative, we have on the drawing boards an expansion, but that's many months away, probably a couple of years. And also, if you've been there lately, it's hard to find a parking space. And the third problem is with the pandemic, a lot of the rental companies have sold their inventory so that the rental product that's available now is very, very expensive. So that to me represents an opportunity for your product. Your thoughts, please?
Yes, I think you're correct. There is a large opportunity for us to create a route from the airport to different destinations. It isn't in the budget currently. Our focus is in getting our Bluffton service started. We had to postpone that from a July 1 opening to a September 7 and that's because we don't have enough drivers. We also have a request to do a second shift transportation service for employers on Hilton Head and we're hoping in our next class of drivers that begins next week that we'll have a candidate that's interested in that shift time and that work. And so we're struggling, as everyone is, with having the employees to get this going. But we have buses to increase our ridership with a route to the airport. And if the town wanted to step forward and say, "We'll fund that," we would certainly be looking for a driver to do that. I mean, I agree with you, there's a huge opportunity in providing transportation from the airport to the destinations that folks are going to.
And I think without stretching it too much, this problem or opportunity is pandemic-related. And Hertz and others have sold their product because of the pandemic. The people are looking for some psychological and recreational relief and opportunity. That's pandemic-related. It's something, if the town manager is on the call, I see his name is, it's something we just may want to kick around among ourselves. Last comment is going back to the north end. Certainly, I think there's an opportunity to do more to transport workers to and fro in our community, my community Ward 2, as well as Councilman Stanford. We have the largest population cluster, if you will, of people, many of whom avail themselves of the beaches during the week or on the weekend. Thoughts about coming into the gated communities with a predictable service to take people to and fro, to the beaches?
I think we, as a transit provider, are open to whatever growth opportunities there are to look at and explore, you know, timetables and equipment. If the town would like us to expand again with another vehicle, then we would certainly look into the best routing. And I'll have to say, your Ann Siren, who I work with, has been very helpful and gives great direction on, you know, possible routings and growth opportunities. And so really, I work hand-in-hand with the town to come up with, you know, the next opportunity that looks like it would be viable.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Lennox, would you like to comment or ask any questions?
Thank you, David. Only one, Mary Lou, how is the relationship with the Seapines Trolleys?
I had several meetings last year or the year before to talk about interfacing with the Seapines Trolley. And the only way that would work for us time-wise was we looked at making, instead of a 30-minute trip from Shelter Cove to Caligny, make it 40 minutes. And then we targeted trolley stop one. Well, it turns out that's really just an overflow lot and it's only used when they need overflow parking. And so for us to really interface with Seapines, we need to go all the way to their, I don't know what it's called, is it Town Center or their? If we went all the way to Seapine Center, well, that's 15 minutes in and 15 minutes out. So, you know, we don't have the ability with drivers and vehicles to make that our next priority and it would be nice if maybe Seapines wanted to meet us, you know, either out of the gates or close to the Greenwood Gate. So it kind of died after that, after we looked at the feasibility of it. And that overflow lot one is really not where we want to be. We wanted to be at the Seapine Center, which it would be another route. I don't think you'd want to take people that want to go to Caligny from Shelter Cove and go all the way down to Seapine Center, come all the way out and then go to Caligny. I think that would be another spur on a route. And yeah, I think it would be great. I think it would be great to link the two. It would reduce a lot of your traffic as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up and ask the same question of Sam Bennett at CSA.
Thank you, Tom. It's interesting that you bring that up. When I was riding the trolley last week, a couple got on the trolley at Weston and they were headed towards the Harbor Town Lighthouse. And I had to disabuse them of the likelihood that they were going to be able to get there. But your point, Tom, is a very good one. If the public trolley stopped at the reception center and somehow linked up to the Seapine Center, there may be an opportunity there. So I would encourage you to pursue those possibilities. It would just, would be an obvious connection point. Mary Lou, I wanted to share with you the experiences I had in riding the shuttle. I asked the committee members, do you avail themselves of a trolley ride? And I think they did. I did the same thing. And just by way of experience, I went over to the trolley stop here at Harris Teeter for a 110 shuttle and the shuttle didn't arrive until 1:40. I found out later, at least I think I overheard a driver saying the gas pumps were down. And so I obviously missed a shuttle stop. We went with seven passengers, picked up at that point, headed towards Shelter Cove. There were two singles and then there was a family plus myself. And the shuttle actually stopped in a few hundred feet. There was a young couple wanting to get to Caligny and they had their bathing suits on, but the bus was going, the trolley was headed in the wrong way. I noticed that on this particular link, the driver was pretty fast and there's a significant rattle in the bus. And I'm not throwing darts at the difficulty of finding good people or maintaining, it was just a part of the experience, that's all. We stopped at Shelter Cove at 2:00, having watched the northbound bus pull out before I got there. So I waited another 30 minutes. And the point was well-made, I think, that the signage for the trolley stops might be perfect, but there's very little shade and it gets awfully hot. And I don't know if we want to go out and buy benches to make it more comfortable, but there is a little bit of issue. Now, people who wanted to get on the shuttle waited and found shade under a tree or whatever. So there are solutions to that. There's one other passenger riding up towards the north end, but when we got to the Weston, there were six passengers. And we stopped at Fiddler Cove and two teenage boys in bathing suits got on, obviously headed to, I say obviously, I presumed headed to Caligny. So it was just a smorgasbord of users. And so I think that is good. The driver on the north end was a New York transport employee formerly, very professional, knew exactly how to handle the bus, competent, good driver. So that was, you know, thumbs up on that. So what are my observations that are more related to the operation and management than just the buses and the trip itself? I think that we all would benefit if we tightened up our management reporting systems so that when you come to us, there is a ridership summary that is more comprehensible than the one that was prepared on a daily basis. The analysis of data, you mentioned that boarding statistics. I like that idea. I really, if we could drill down at a granular level of who was getting on, how many people were getting on where, we might be able to make the routes more beneficial and efficient. So I think that the data analysis, the management reporting systems, the boarding statistics, all of that is, I think, important information for council to have to make wise decisions going forward. I wrote down in my notes, "Free is good." People got on, they didn't have to worry about having a dollar bill in their bathing suit or digging out something. It was a nice feeling and I think a welcoming gesture to people who are visiting the island. Needless to say, we have to pay for it. I wondered, didn't we talk about video capability last year?
Yes, and I meant to bring that up in the beginning. We were trying to get a local vendor that actually does audio/video for boats to install the video monitors in the trolleys and it turned out that he was not that interested in our business. So we've taken a trolley to Savannah and it's been probably four weeks ago to get an estimate and they have not returned the estimate. So I have folks calling and working with them or maybe we'll find another vendor. This one was also for boats, just because of the movement of the trolley. We wanted something that was hardened and that, you know, wasn't a consumer or household product. And so we are still working on that because we want to show the videos of the town and all the different things that we wanted to put in, working with your town staff. And hopefully we'll get a resolution to that shortly.
I would put a priority on that, Mary Lou. What struck me is that most of these people were looking at their cellphones along the way. In other words, they were not on Hilton Head, they were somewhere else. And some of them weren't even looking out the window to see what they were going by. So I think that- So I think there's just a big lost opportunity there that we need to be sharing Hilton Head values, our expectations, opportunities, and so on and so forth. So I, I think that's an important one. How should council evaluate cost and benefit? I mean, you said our ridership is way up. What's, what, what should be a reasonable expectation for this kind of service?
You know, right off the cuff, you know, I think seeing the ridership go up, seeing it being utilized and, and ultimately relieving the traffic on the island. I'm not sure what statistics would work for you all. We, I do statistics in my board packet. I don't do them specifically for the trolley, but it talks about, you know, passengers per hour, cost per hour, cost per passenger. I mean, if you wanted performance reports just for the trolley in that vein, we could produce them.
Yeah, well, I think summary reports at the very least would be helpful. And, and when you say relieving traffic, yes, that is conceptually the benefit of public transportation. But in a community like Hilton Head, which is not laid out to support public transportation in any significant way, I, I think six passengers here and seven passengers there is not really making a difference on our roadways. I think that the, how we have to evaluate the benefit is, is more about the experience that we are providing and then the convenience for the people who we're serving. I, I just think there is, is some measure of practicality that we as council are faced with when we're considering this operation. But I want to end up with where Bill was on the airport. Clearly, people do not have easy transportation and they wait out in the hot sun for some kind of vehicle to get them where they want to go. You, you stop at the Weston and I'm just wondering whether or not, there's an assumption here. The assumption is that during certain times, there is so much offloading of passengers at the airport, we don't have adequate services to provide transportation and that it might make sense for us to reallocate a trolley to serve that purpose during those specific times. In other words, maybe postpone the service in one area to provide a service in another area, not increasing necessarily the amount of buses, but simply reallocating routes. I, I, I have a suspicion that that's not practical, but the point is that if a trolley could arrive at the airport at 1:30 on Saturday afternoon and Sunday afternoon, when there is a glut of six airplanes trying to load and offload, that it might be a service that benefits a bunch of people. And, and so that's, you know, a concept for you to consider and I'd be interested in your thoughts in that regard at this point. What are your immediate reactions to that?
My immediate reaction is I, I think that we should have a meeting with the airport to look at, you know, our peak times and, and perhaps we can set up a route on the weekends or if that's when everybody's flying in and out. And, and, but I would not want to reallocate the trolley service because it, it, it's, it's got its schedule, it's, it was well thought out. I do apologize for the experience you had.
No apologies, sorry. That wasn't the point of my talking about it.
Yes. But anyway, I, I think it's a, it's a great idea for us perhaps to do a, a pilot on the airport. Because as Mr. Harkins pointed out, it may be all pandemic related, it may not be an issue next year, but it is certainly an issue this year. And, and I think we should look at that.
Mary Lou, I've seen smaller Palmetto Breeze buses or shuttles driving around town. What are their routes?
Okay, so we have, all of the white Palmetto Breeze buses are basically our rural services. And we have a rural and an urban element. And the smaller buses you see that are painted like the trolleys are for use in the urbanized area. And that would be the vehicle that I would recommend for the airport services. And they're, they do all different services. Sometimes we'll use the big green cutaway if the trolley bus is broken. We have a spare trolley, it's at Freightliner in Savannah right now for warranty work on a module. So we have three, we run three. There's times with the three that if something goes wrong with one of them, we put the green cutaway in there until we get the trolley back and running. So we do have vehicles. I think that the, what we're looking at for the airport would probably only be a couple hours a day during peak time. And so that's not a huge amount of service. And I think it's something that, that we should explore.
Well, I, I, I think there are a couple of issues here. One is, is it something that the, the town should get involved in? And I'm making a little bit of a judgment there that we have a, I'm going to call it a temporary need for additional service in the airport. And once the whole allocation of, of rental cars gets back in sort of a normal place, this may lessen. So I, my thought is that if you're having a conversation with the airport, it might make sense to see what a practical and temporary solution might look like.
David, may I jump in on that thought?
You absolutely may.
So while I, I hear what's being discussed, I think that one of the, another direction that needs to be explored or suggested or discussions that need to be started has to do with encouraging the various hotels. And I realize many of our visitors and rivals aren't going to hotels, they're going to villas and homes and back to home. But I would encourage the hotels and anyone else with a shuttle of their own to do a periodic trip through the parking lot. That's where their customers and clients are coming from and that's where they're bound and paying their bill to support such a service rather than adding additional costs to the town, which no one should be surprised about. I'm going to look at every dollar that gets spent and whether it's appropriate for the town to be spending that money. So I just wanted to make that part of it, this discussion.
Yeah, well, it's absolutely germane and it is the priority. To the extent that the hotels and resorts have shuttles, that's, that's sort of the first stop. Point well taken. Are there any other comments that we should share with Mary Lou? Mary Lou, we've given you a bucket load of reactions and ideas. To the extent that ideas were discussed, I think we would appreciate some kind of response to them on a fairly timely basis so that we know how we should be organizing our thoughts regarding this service. My, I do have my own personal feelings about the practicality, the brand relationship and so on. But with your continued leadership, I'm hoping we can get to the place that we're all satisfied with. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Public Planning Committee, if there is, let me just make sure. Terry, is Terry even here? Any staff reports?
No, sorry, no staff report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those just signify by raising your right hand? Thank you very much. Have a great day. Appreciate your time and thoughts. Thanks.